To the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the September 17th, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Before I read the agenda, on behalf of the Board, I'd like to welcome Ted Kozak, our interim Town Administrator. So, enjoy.
Thank you very much. So, first, I do enjoy it.
Yeah. On our agenda, we do have public service announcements, we have a continuation of a public hearing for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club at 6:35. Department head updates, the fire chief will be unavailable this evening, but we do have the police chief and the building inspector. We have a vote to accept a few resignations, Town Administrator's update, all business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens' forum, and then we will adjourn. Public service announcements, the first one is the MMA is going to hold their legislative breakfast meetings in October. October 12th will be in Framingham and Norwell, October 19th in Newbury Port and Westport, October 26th Stockbridge and Sunderland. The town of Sturbridge is now back under mandatory water ban, excuse me, which means nonessential outside water use is not allowed, except that sprinklers may be used for lawn watering outside of the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. one day a week. All the other information about it can be found on the website. And we did get from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, our certification of our tax rate, which is $19.15 per thousand. It is down from last year's rate, however, values went up, so it does not mean the tax bills will go down. Okay. And then there's also a memorandum to department heads who already got it, and maybe not all Boards and Commissions and Committees, but the tentative time schedule for the special town meeting is September 19th is the deadline for warrant articles. Oh, that was supposed to be, okay, no, October 1st. Yeah, he's got the annual town meeting, but it's a special. October 1st, warrant presentation to Board of Selectmen, posting and printing of the warrant, and October 29th is the special town meeting. So, that's just a typo there. Okay, Priscilla, do you have any?
No.
Chase?
No.
Mike?
Mary? Oh, I just want to remind everybody, this Thursday at the Host Hotel, we're having a Sturbridge community bonfire from 5:00 to 9:00. We're gonna have a couple of bands, there's going to be vendors, it should be a fun night. The Host is graciously hosting it along with the Special Events Committee.
Is that this week or the 29th?
The 20th.
Twenty.
It's this Thursday.
This Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, three days from now, so.
Okay, and then I forgot the reminder, the base date dental at Hobbs Brook is having a ribbon cutting tomorrow at 8:30 in the morning, hopefully before the rain. Okay, so now we have our continuation of the Hamilton and Rod Gun Club gravel removal permit continuation. Good evening, and would you please introduce yourself for the audience at home?
Frank Bucary with Burton Engineering, good evening for the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club quarry permit. So, we submitted revised plans pursuant to our last meeting, which I apologize for missing. I thought we were continued, and I apologize to everybody for not showing up for that. I thought the continuation meant I didn't have to be here, so I apologize, misunderstanding on my part, and no disrespect intended on that, so.
No, apology accepted, but we always like representation for questions to be answered.
Yep, understood, understood.
Okay.
So, we submitted revised plans, I've met with Greg to try to address some of his drainage concerns. I think I've, we have an improvement, I don't know that we're 100% of the way there yet, but I think we're to a point now where I would ask if there isn't other concerns aside from the drainage maybe needing to be tweaked a little bit, that that would be something that we could update as we get closer to the end point, to see where we're at with the site grading, see how much material's been taken or not taken. And then I would recommend or request we be able to update the plan, say, six months prior to closing out, so we know where we're at with all the grading, that it all still makes sense, we're not trying to force something to work based on this design, and that if there is any issues that are appearing with, as the design is presently sent to you, is implemented, that we could address those at that time as well. So, that would just be one suggestion on how to move forward if the plan isn't 100% where it needs to be right now.
Okay, and closing out.
Because it is a bit of a moving target.
Closing out is scheduled for what, 2020?
2020, yes.
Okay. Greg, would you like to come down, please, if there are comments you'd like to make or questions?
How we doing?
Good, and you?
Good.
At least you don't have to plow the rain.
Yeah, but it's ugly. It's ugly just to say.
I know.
It's by a heck of a lot better than North and South Carolina, also. That's, that's a shame. Yeah, essentially, we did meet, what I was, what, after one of the revisions I was worried about, there was a pretty wide expanse off the new excavation coming into the existing parking lot, that really didn't have any mitigation for that runoff, and that was part of it. And the original submittal had two outfalls, one would be to the northerly side of excavation, and one the existing single catch basin and pipe that's in the vicinity parking lot. So, my concern is, or my hope is, that the retention that we've got shown, the connectivity to retain, so it doesn't overrun the single catch basin that's there, and create an erosion problem in different location. So, we didn't tie in the northerly catch basin, it's kind of shown outfall onto the parking lot, which eventually will get back down to the single catch basin, which is really not what I wanted, I wanted a separate outfall for that, but I think, you know, the condition that we meet within six months before the thing's closed out, and make sure that the stormwater, the management is working ahead of, you know, final closeout of the project is an important thing to do, because I just don't want, you know, essentially, other than a little retainage, a little stormwater retention, it's, it's still relying on a single catch basin, which is not the best design.
Okay, now, these are the 2013 plans, because we had confusion whether it was 2008 plans or 2013 that everybody was looking at. It's 2013?
The 2013, I think, was never meant to be an officially submitted plan.
Oh, okay.
I think that was more a plan, that was the gun club had.
Okay, well, there was confusion about it.
Yeah, that was, the original, that's why there was some confusion, the first time I was here was the plan, and what was the plan, the official plan, so really, the 2008 plan is what we're kind of updating, and this is the, you know, updated.
Okay, because the town planner was concerned about the 2013, that it didn't have all the notes that were on the 2008.
Right.
But if we're going by the 2008, the notes are there.
I believe, I, I'd have to double check that all the notes, I wasn't looking specifically for the notes, but the overall design intent, I think, goes back to that 2008 plan.
And then she also said she thinks it should clearly show what's been excavated and what has been closed out.
Nothing's really been closed out yet.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not gonna be closed out.
Well, portions are, and that's, that's what, it was the phasing plan, so there are portions where we proposed a one-to-one riprap, and Mr. Suppanut had asked about the one-to-one riprap being in the regulations, and, no, it's not typically allowed, it was, however, there was one-to-one riprap approved on the '08 plan, so I did leave the one-to-one riprap in there. It was in a different location, it was on the berm next to the pistol range, there was some one-to-one riprap proposed, and so right now, the slope that we're proposing the one-to-one riprap, we're not altering the slope, it's steeper than two-to-one, so we're just basically saying, dress the slope as it is now. As far as safety concerns, I don't think it's gonna be a huge safety concern, right, it's been steeper than one-to-one, it's been open for a while now, it is adjacent to a roadway, however, there's large boulders along the road, and it, typically, people aren't walking up to the rifle range that's up top, they're driving up to it, and if they are walking, they should be in a relatively lucid state of mind, because it is a shooting range, so people should be more aware than a typical site, because they need to be, for the nature of the site itself. So, I think for those reasons, it would be appropriate for the site.
Okay. Now, Greg, we got a letter from the conservation agent, is the drainage system shown on the plan?
On this one, on this one?
Yeah, because she, she says the existing drainage system is not shown on the plan.
Oh, the existing catch basin?
Well, she just says drainage system, and it's unclear if the system is.
It's a single catch basin and an outfall pipe, which is probably 60 feet long, 50 to 60 feet long, not very big.
Yeah.
No, that is not shown on the.
No, I think when we update that previous, we'll get more survey when we update, and that connection, and again, I think the whole parking lot will be reviewed at that point, and that's something that as part of the closeout, the club may choose to do parking lot improvements, I don't think that's part of the quarry contract, so that would be a separate thing, and that would require approvals, just the proximity to the pond and everything, work in the parking lot would require conservation approval, so I think all that would be part of that closeout package of, you know, where is the site getting left? Because the gun club wants to, they don't want to have problems with Cedar Lake down the road, they don't want to have problems with Greg down the road, so when, when they do close everything out, I think at that point in time, they would try to incorporate any parking lot revisions with that closeout.
Yeah. Okay, now, did you get a copy of the latest two letters we got from Conservation Interim?
I have not yet.
So, Sinek could.
I have an option.
I was gonna say, you can email those to me tomorrow.
Yeah, you can.
Something I need to address right now, but.
Yeah, because in it, she does say, it doesn't appear that there are jurisdictional areas in the immediate vicinity of the proposed work areas.
And just so he has a complete file, maybe Gene's memo, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you can, can I?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, questions from the Board?
If you can read that, because I've not, I guess she's saying she can't make the determination as to whether it falls within our bylaw?
Right, I don't think it does.
Because.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so can you just explain, like, you know, in her third paragraph, the last sentence, as this appears to be discharging into jurisdictional buffer zones, additional information about the current system, including the outfall location and the amount of increased flows, would be required to make that determination? So, I think she's saying she doesn't have enough information about those two things?
Sure.
To determine if it triggers our bylaw?
Okay.
So, does she, can you give her more information?
Yeah, I can give her more information. So, the catch basin, I believe, was in there, is within their jurisdiction, so when we go to make that connection, that, that pipe connection would be the one thing that was in their jurisdiction. The quarry itself and all the site work, and I checked on the out, the additional outfall that we, we had revised, that I had looked, because we had done some previous survey work, because, for a septic system, so we had the edge of the pond on there, that work is outside, that one connection would be jurisdictional to them.
Okay, so you'll go through them on that?
Yes, yeah, so when we're going to make that connection, we would need their approvals to do that, and, again, that's part of that six-month prior plan, and the parking lot, and kind of doing all that at once.
Okay.
But the, the work on the quarry area itself, that's all outside their jurisdiction at this point, yeah.
Well, I mean, hopefully, some of these ponds get dug before.
Well, yeah.
A six-month closeout.
Right, but whether they.
I mean, that's kind of the point.
Right, but whether they are all piped and connected to the outfall, they might not need to be, if they're, if they're just staging up and infiltrating down, we wouldn't necessarily need that connection. Ideally, the connection, the final connection to that outfall would hopefully not have a lot of flow to it, that's the point of having the big basins, so hopefully those work on an interim basis before we need to make that connection. If we find that we can't hold the water and we need to make that connection, then that's a finding that we would need to do.
Okay, anyone else on the Board? Mike?
Back in 2008, in, in addition to the earth removal permit, I believe there was a special permit granted by the, by the planning board, and I was wondering, and it's, it's actually was mentioned in the earth removal permit. Now, does that special permit have to be renewed as well? We're going through some significant changes to the original earth removal.
Sure, I'm not sure, that special permit does need to get updated, if it does, we will, I don't, I don't know.
Well, you can get in touch.
I'm throwing a question out there, because I don't know.
Get in touch with Gene, because she didn't mention anything about a special permit.
Yeah, no, if that needs to happen, then if there's something.
Yeah, I didn't realize until we got a copy of the special permit in our packet, so, and so I've got a question.
So, if something needs to be extended or filed with the planning board, we'll, we'll do that, and that can be a condition of your approval, if you choose to approve it.
The maintain bond, the bond, restoration bond, that's part of it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a whole list of things in the special permit, I don't know if, if they need to deal with it or not, but I, I'm just asking the question now to make sure that we're working in concert with the special permit.
If there was a special permit and the plan is changed, we should at least be notifying the planning board anyway, of, even if we don't need, you know, they should at least be in the loop, so.
Right.
It's probably worth a presentation to them, just to update them, even if the permit's not required.
Anything else, Mike?
No, that was.
Chase?
Yeah, I just want to offer a little praise, I went up there, I think everything's really clean, there were quite a few trucks hauling out, and the road was spotless, you guys, I think the gun club, Burton, and Ramco's done a phenomenal job up there, and that's just me.
Priscilla? Also, okay, it's public hearing, anyone in the audience? Okay, would you come down, please, and identify yourself?
Dante from the.
Okay, into the mic, please, it's for, really, the people at home, most of us can hear pretty well here.
Dante from the Ride and Gun Club. Did I hear a discussion about the bond?
Yes.
Okay, just need to be sure that's, that's valid through the remainder of the project. Okay.
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion then to close the public hearing? Some moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay, now, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to grant the permit for earth removal to Hamilton Rod and Gun Club.
Okay, it's an extension of.
Extension of the permit.
Second? Okay, any discussion?
Are all of the conditions on the original permit gonna remain in, in place?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, okay, let me see. Is that part of your motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Chase, Priscilla?
I thought it was understood, but I wanted to make sure that everybody understood it.
Some things are understood, but not understood.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, thank you, Greg, for coming in, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, let me.
See you in a year and a half.
Or sooner.
Okay, now, the fire chief is not here, but if anybody has any questions on his reports, you can get them to Mr. Kozak, and he can forward them on. Okay, so next, we have Police Chief Ford. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Pretty steady and standard July report for us, our numbers are up a bit, with calls for service, and some increases in other areas. Operationally of note, you'll see that there were several callouts for the SEMLEC teams, various activities. Also, Officer Murray conducted our regular Burgess Elementary School Rad Kids Program is both in July and August. If there were any questions on the July report.
Anyone have any questions?
If we're August, operationally, we had a few events that we have annually that were, again, successes. Those three events were the Pan-Mass Challenge, which went off very well, it was another beautiful morning, and a safe and well-attended event. Our next event was the Annual National Night Out, held on the Town Common. This event is gaining momentum and getting larger each year, with more people coming out to the Town Common and participating, both from the citizenry and from the vendorships that are out there, and the support that we receive from the community overall is overwhelming, so we're gonna continue to move forward, keeping it on the common as successful as it has been. And we also held our annual seniors in law enforcement together cookout at the Public Safety Complex, where the Police Department and the Fire Department worked together to provide a wonderful cookout for all of our seniors from the senior center, and each year we seem to max out on this event, and, and end up having to put another easy up out there for two or three more tables, so the good thing is it's growing. However, I think Barbara Boito, who pretty much organizes it on her own, and sets a lot of it up on her own, is, is certainly gonna be working harder each year, but she does receive a lot of help that day, in the setup, in the takedown, in the cooking, and the delivery services of the food and beverages to our seniors, it's, it's a pretty decent event that's held out in the parking lot at the Public Safety Complex, and, again, it's always, I'm always amazed at, at the support that we have from members of the community, businesses in the community, as well as the staff at the Police and Fire Departments, and the, as well as the Council on Aging, so I want to thank everybody for their assistance in making that, all these events a success. Any questions for August?
Anybody on the Board have a question? Mike?
Yeah, I, I have a question, I'd like, if you could, give us a, an update on the status of School Resource Officer.
Okay, with, I would like to, I do have one of the, two other things I'd like to talk about, so I can, I will address that question, if we could, I could just put this, this report aside.
Okay.
If we're done with this, then I can go on, I can go on to that subject.
Okay.
Well, I just had, oh, go ahead, Mary.
No, are we, where, no, we're not, we're, oh, okay, start over, are we on August still?
We are on August, yeah.
I just had one question on August afterwards, that's okay. No, he's taking questions on.
Oh, you are? I was just curious, the motor vehicle citations went up, like, quite a bit, is that a new policy on terms of how frequently detail goes out, or?
I, I think that's.
2,400 to 350.
I think that's just an overall activity level for, from the staffing that we have. We have a number of young and aggressive officers out there, we have several different traffic safety initiatives that we have in place, that we haven't had in the past, that we haven't had in the past through grants. While it does say citations, I just, if you go to the Performance Measures page, you'll see that while we're effectively performing the task of stopping the vehicles and enforcing the speeding laws and other motor vehicle laws, you'll see that the actual violations for the month are only 46 money citations, while there were 323 written warnings, and 201 verbal warnings, and three bylaw citations that were issued. So, when we have these selective enforcement patrols, we're receiving monies from, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to go out and target specific areas, whether it's texting and driving, distracted driving of any kind, and we could have patrols out there once or twice a week, we've had the crosswalk stings and those such events, and they generate a significant amount of activity, and also, we have our safety initiatives on, on our problematic roads, where we go out and put out a speed board, we put out some variable signage to warn people to slow down on the road, and then usually that's followed up with an enforcement action, where we really saturate the road with patrols and try to, try to warn as many people, and try to get everybody on board with slowing down on a particular side road in town here, so, though, all those factor into why those numbers are going up.
Yeah, no, I was just curious, so you do have some new initiatives this year that you didn't have a year ago?
Yes, and, and I think it's the personnel, the staffing as well.
Okay. Okay, Tom, on the boat patrols for August, only Cedar Lake was done?
Yes.
Any reason why, or?
Different variables between weather, assignments, personnel availability, you'll see that, well, you won't, actually, you won't see it, because it's a separate report that I received, but when, the report that I received on that, it was, give me one second, I do have it. I think those, those, those actual patrols were concentrated on a specific couple of days.
Yeah, because there's 13 of them.
Yes, those are 13 inspections conducted.
Inspections, yeah, not patrols.
Just, those were two four-hour shifts that were done, and one single one-hour shift, so a total of nine hours on two different days, it just, what happens is, just get overwhelmed in priorities, certainly, we're triaging what our responsibilities are, and, and a lot of times, we may not get to all the lakes, if we can get to as many as we can, we do, but this particular month, we're just not able to get to as many of those lakes as we would have liked to, so it wasn't, we, like, we spent an inordinate amount of time, just two four-hour patrols out there, and one one-hour patrol.
Okay, because the, July was 38 inspections, so.
Which, again, we were, had a little, we had a little bit more latitude there, and I don't know what the weather conditions were, there may have been more scheduled that never got to make it there, or other events that happened that caused the boat patrols to be canceled for one reason or another.
Okay, thank you, now, you said you had a few things you wanted to talk about?
Yes, if I, if I could, if, it goes beyond the report, but falls in, into one of the questions that I was asked. Over the summer, I have met with the police chiefs from the Tantascia Regional School District on a couple of occasions, we've also met as a team together with the Superintendent of Schools, as well as with the Tantascia School Committee Chairperson, and we discussed the School Resource Officer program at the school, and there was a lot of information that was exchanged back and forth, and we came away with an outline, developing a School Resource Officer program for the entire district, we want to take, and this is something that we get from our emergency management side of public safety, but a, a more whole-community approach to school resource officers in the communities that are servicing the Tantascia Regional School District. While Sturbridge serves as the hub with Tantascia High School and Junior High School, we still have four other elementary schools that supply these children to the junior and senior high school, and we have a School Resource Officer at Burgess right now for full-time K through six position, and I think that those School Resource Officer services should be brought into the district elementary levels in all the other communities. So, we're going to be reaching out to the other communities for their support from their departments to participate at that level, so that we can develop a program where we're getting into the schools with those children at an earlier age, with all the officers that are involved, that are working as a team, and it's called a program because it's just that, it's, it's a service program that involves a team of police officers that are all specially-trained in School Resource Officer services in participating in all these towns. Now, where, where we come into place with Sturbridge, the Sturbridge will be the hub, because there'll be, what I'm hoping, a full-time police officer at, a Sturbridge police officer at the Tantascia Senior and Junior High School, at, at the campus there, that serves as the hub, where we can draw in a Brookfield officer, one or two or three hours a week to co-teach at the senior and junior high school, that we can also bring in Brimfield, Holland, and Wales to co-teach with that Sturbridge officer, to co-resource with that Sturbridge officer throughout the weeks. And subsequently, and in addition, the same team has a very similar program, but on a smaller scale with the elementary schools throughout the district. The thought being is that when these young men and women get to seventh grade, while our Sturbridge kids have already experienced Officer Murray in the school, some of them may have only experienced their police officers as, as very minimal impact and very minimal contacts throughout their school years. While I know every one of the communities involved do have officers that are in and out of the school, there's no standardized program. And what we want to do with the, again, with this whole community approach is standardize, standardize the emergency response protocols, standardize all of the safety plans in these schools, standardize how we deal with any issues that may arise, how we direct our, our team of educators and administrators to the proper and necessary resources in the truest sense, that whatever we can do to help and to be there for them. So, with that in mind, we've, again, the last meeting I had with the Superintendent and the Chairman of the School Committee, there was favorable discussion at the, at the School Committee level now for this. The State Attorney General recently released additional information to include an MOU that has been developed that satisfies a lot of the questions that had been asked in the past, where some informational deficiencies existed with respect to the school committees not getting answers to questions, not having procedures in place for questions. So, we think and we feel as a group that we've satisfied a lot of those answers. And tonight, I'm going to be asking that, that you, the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Sturbridge, support a warrant article that I'm placed, I've placed in your office for review to budget for the remainder of Fiscal Nineteen, a School Resource Officer, to fund the salary and wages and overtime costs, as well as the equipment and training costs for that position. On September twentieth, there is a meeting with the Bylaw and Subcommittee, Bylaw and Policy Subcommittee of Tantascu School Committee. That committee and the, and the Regional Joint Committee tasked the administrator, the Chairman and the Superintendent with entering into these discussions to work towards coming back to them with a solution and an offering for change in policy and for the inclusion of this program into the district. They have an additional meeting on October sixteenth, at which time, they're going to take a vote as to whether or not they want to consider having the School Resource Officer Program instituted.
Can you say that date again?
October sixteenth.
October sixteen. It's my hope that these favorable discussions, the fact that a lot of the questions have been answered in this whole community approach to the public safety aspect and the resource aspect of this proposal will be voted on in favor by the Tantascu Regional School Committee at their joint School Committee Meeting, which will be almost two weeks ahead of our special town meeting. And I'm obviously going to feel more confident going to the floor of the special town meeting requesting this. If this warrant makes it to, if this warrant request, warrant article makes it to the actual warrant, then obviously, I'm going to feel more confident coming to the, coming to the floor of the special town meeting to speak in favor of this with the support of that committee. And that's where we would be with the School Resource Officer Program at Tantascu at this time.
Okay, any comments, questions, Priscilla?
First of all, I want to thank you for your diligence, because I know this discussion goes back at least, I can recall, ten years, that we have been trying to get, I know you and I have had this discussion when I was on FinCom about a School Resource Officer, and we've tried many times and have failed. I'm so happy for this outcome. I commend the Superintendent for coming around. And the program that you have in mind, I'm excited. I am excited, it's finally happening, because it's coming closer than it's ever been. And I stand behind this one hundred plus percent.
And thank you, and I appreciate that. And I'm pretty excited too, because the other chiefs, the other district chiefs, we, we, we've got a, we've got a great outline, we think, for, for this program that involves the educators at all levels, involves all the administrations, input from everyone to make sure that this is as successful a program as we have here in Sturbridge. And it's as successful as we plan, plan for it to be. And we're hoping that by having this whole-community type approach to the School Resource Officer Program throughout the district, that, that it'll be successful and beneficial to all the students throughout K through twelve.
Okay, anything else from anybody?
I just, Mary, I agree with Selectman Jimison, I also support it, but I just have a couple of questions. So, the State Attorney General came out with a standardized memorandum of understanding?
Yes.
That kind of got distributed to all the municipalities?
And all the school districts as well, yes.
Okay, and so, their questions that they had several years ago when we first implemented at Burgess, and it was supposed to be at the high school, but they rejected it, have been satisfied because of this standardized MOU?
I think it answered a lot of those questions that they had concerns about.
Okay.
And, and again, it's a boilerplate and we can modify it. We can, we can certainly tailor it to our own needs.
Yep, and then my other question was, so, the whole-community approach, and I agree, this is going to get the elementary schools in the other districts some exposure to an SRO before they get to the junior high, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, is it going to change in any way our School Resource Officer now that's already at Burgess in terms of hours? Or what kind of subjects are covered? Because that's working for us, I don't want to.
It is. I can't, I can't give you a definitive answer yet, because I want to first have the program established and go from there. If anything, the only effect that it would have would be, there would be some hours that she would be out of the school and teaching somewhere else. However, the other benefit of it is we would have an additional officer with, with her in there. And it's our approach is we want to have the uniforms of Sturbridge and Brimfield and Holland and Wales be so familiar to these, these kids that they, that it's not, it's not a shock or unusual for them to see them in part of, part of all the communities. We don't want to take anything away from what we've already have established. We want to try to enhance it. But we may need some of the services that she's providing, but I don't think it's going to, I don't think it's going to have any kind of, any kind of detrimental impact to what program that she has over there.
But, okay, I'm just thinking in terms of the parents at the, at the.
I have, I have them completely in mind. And I, and I, and I will only take, you know, what I'm able to take from her to add to the other program. Because I'm hoping that if we have another full-time police officer up at the regional high school and junior high school, that that person will take on the workload that we anticipate.
Okay, so, you do not foresee a significant reduction in hours at the Burgess location?
No, no.
Anything else?
Great news.
So, you've already passed in?
Well, while I'm bringing great news, I do have, I do have a very, to me, troubling and important request of you, the Board of Selectmen. I've come before the Board, I've come before the Finance Committee. I've developed and submitted twelve budgets in my tenure as Police Chief. And as most of you know and have heard from me before, that in my time, I've asked for personnel. I've needed personnel, I've come and asked for personnel. I get told many times that my request has a lot of merit to it, however, that we are not financially capable or ready to add the personnel to the, to the ranks. We know that regional dispatching came before us. And for varying reasons, we did not follow through with the regional dispatch. Other towns bowed out. We weren't able to keep strong communities as part of the regionalization. But some of the weaknesses of our own dispatch center were identified. And a lot of those weaknesses were going to be strengthened by regionalization, which included our communications and more importantly, our personnel. Well, currently, we have five full-time dispatchers. And we have four part-time dispatchers. Those four part-time dispatchers are full-time dispatchers elsewhere, except for one of them's a full-time police officer now. So, three of them are full-time dispatchers elsewhere. And one of them is a full-time police officer, who is Tyler Bress, who just left us. We're training Tyler's position right now, and that leaves us with four full-time dispatchers. One of our other dispatchers is out sick indefinitely at this point, but hope to be back on. But I have a feeling that if we don't take seriously the health and welfare of those public safety dispatchers into consideration now and give them some help by additional staffing, and I just don't mean part-timers, and we, we need full-time people there, then we are going to eventually have a public safety emergency on our hands. Our PSAP is manned singularly by one person that now handles all nine-one-one calls that are coming in. And those nine-one-one calls are coming in for police services, for fire services, and for emergency medical services. I've asked for additional dispatchers over the years. And as I stated in my most recent request, that the one dispatcher that I got in those twelve years really took care of a two thousand and seven shortage that I had. And here we are in two thousand and eighteen. Since that time, emergency medical dispatching has been mandated. These are caregivers on the other line. I had somebody say to me the other day, and I had a, I sprang to the defense of our, our public safety dispatches in Sturbridge and everywhere else. Well, how can they be that stressed out? They're just taking phone calls. These are men and women who just take phone calls when people are at their lowest, at their worst, in their most critical care. There is a, men and women taking phone calls from mothers whose child is not breathing. And they're giving them instructions over the telephone, how to dislodge the marble that's in the throat of that child, so that they can start breathing, all while taking the twenty-seven other arms that they have and getting a fire and ambulance dispatched, getting a police cruiser dispatched to that location, and talking them, giving the pre-arrival medical instructions to these people. And it doesn't stop. And there's times when there are people at a, at a traffic scene and they can hear the firefighters and the police officers yelling for additional help. And they, they can't go through the phone lines. They can't go through the microphones to get to the, to the, to this, to those officers and to those firefighters and those paramedics that are out there to help them anymore. And over time, that does begin to take a toll on people. And if you compound that with staffing shortages, where each week, our dispatches are working an average of twenty-four hours of overtime a week, burnout happens. Our people are being worked out. And we need additional help. We held our Fire Department to NFPA standards several years ago in a report. One of the NFPA standards that I've repeatedly mentioned requires that any department that's providing emergency medical dispatch services to the community, according to NFPA standards, has to have two full-time dispatchers at all times. We don't have that. We were notified that we're going to start taking additional nine-one-one calls that we never had before. One of those calls types are called wireless direct, where we start taking nine-one-one cell calls. And now, in development and soon to be implemented, it's been implemented in some of the eastern region PSAPs, or text to nine-one-one. So, you can actually send a text message to nine-one-one and get text message back, much like we do for our TTY calls, the calls where somebody that, that can't speak or hear, that can, that we type and talk to with the silent calls. So.
Did this already start, Tom?
It's, it's, it's going to be implemented very shortly, within the next.
Like the beginning of the year, or like?
No, within the next few months. So, I've come to you today asking for some relief. And that relief isn't the four dispatchers that I could use tomorrow full-time. It's for one position, one full-time position to include training and uniforms for the remainder of Fiscal Nineteen and hope to be, to hopefully survive into the future budgets of our, of our department. When you, meaning us as a community, increases the size of one department and we, we should, we never take into consideration how that's going to affect the other departments. Well, the Fire Department has doubled its size in the last few years. And not for any other reason, except for their calls for service have gone up significantly. And the ambulances are going out, more calls. Well, they just don't, they get, that information comes through that dispatch center every year. And you can look at these reports that we send out with the year-to-date calls for service. And, you know, the year-to-date calls for service are up by three thousand in some, in, in one, in one year, several hundred each month. And those may, you know, without, I haven't done any study at all before coming to you today. So, I don't have a breakdown of what the calls are or why they are increasing. But I can tell you, I see the men and women that are working in that dispatch center every day, and they're burning out. They need help. They need some relief. And I've tried to hire more people part-time, but we're a pretty good economy right now. And I can't tell you how many times I picked up the phone to the top three candidates from our most recent hiring process. And they said, no, I'm all set, I got another job. You know, I'm over here doing this, I'm over here doing that. One was a dispatcher in, in the Providence area. She lives right here in town. She thought she'd save herself some time and money by working here. But when I told her how much we were paying and how many people we had on staff, she, she politely refused the job. And she said, you know, that's just, you need more people in there. And it sounds like a lot of work. Police, Fire, and Emergency Medical Services. You know, we, we weren't so central, centralized. And once we had a cop on the desk that was answering the phone and dispatching, and the Fire Department had somebody in their department, and the ambulance service was either private or was being answered by the Fire Department, the Fire Services. It's combined now, and it's under, it's under one roof, and it's worked so far. But everything that I've been afraid of is starting to materialize and starting to come to life here now. And I'm starting to see some really great men and women, starting, they're starting to show the effects of, of the shortage of staffing. And we really do need that help in there, in that dispatch center. So, I'd hope that when you see that warrant article request that comes to me, that comes from me to you for that extra public safety dispatcher position for the remainder of Fiscal Nineteen, that you will support it as a board. I implore you to support it as a board. And I will continue to work to provide the safest possible public safety dispatch center that we can, we can provide to the community. But we, and we've always tried to be there, and we've never let the community down. And I don't want it to happen. But, you know, I, I've started to see mistakes happening with people that never made mistakes before. And I start, and, and it's hard to hold those people accountable for those mistakes because they're professionals. But after looking at what they do each day and, oh, how they're working and how they're, you know, they're recognized. And that, that one person that said they'd just take phone calls, they're just on the other end of the phone. You know, how hard can that be? It's not like they're there with their arms in the blood and the guts. And I just, I, I didn't lose it, but I, I really had a, a pretty decent discussion with that person afterwards and the merits of, of the significance, importance of that position. So, please, I, I thank you for allowing me the time to speak about that. I really do appreciate the support that you, that you can give me, that you have given me in the past for that position for the remainder of Fiscal Nineteen.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. And you did submit both warrant articles.
Yes, I did.
I just, did you say each dispatcher right now is working an average of twenty-four hours of overtime per week?
Right now, within the last couple of weeks, yes.
Each one?
Yes, of the three, of the three full-timers, yes. And, and when I do their budget, we've always done a hundred percent fill rate because there's nobody to replace them. So, if one takes vacation, the other one has to work. There's no relief. And, and now, I'm starting, you know, I've got a couple of senior dispatchers that have five weeks of vacation. And, and I'm seeing people submit their vacation for pay because they can't take it.
Now, if we.
And we've, and, and on, on the aside, I want you to know that, you know, we have critical incident stress management, we have debriefings, we have to add act or action reviews. We've offered any type of, any type of employee assistance that's available. But you, you can only get so much assistance from, from, you need rest, you know? You need to have, you need to get your, your, your sleep modes in order. You need to have, you need to have some help, you know? You just can't try to bear that burden all, all by yourself, all those weeks and hours.
You think the overtime will go down somewhat on them with the full-timer, so that it's not just a net increase in terms of the money?
You know, I, I don't. You know, I, I don't know that I, I don't know that I even looked at it from that side.
I'm just looking at different...
I'm looking at this strictly from a personnel saying, "If I had more people then..."
Oh, I get it.
More people could take time off. Well, but you, I'm, I'm not, you know, it's not that I don't understand that more people mean more vacation time, more people mean more costs and holidays and all that that comes with it. But if we have two dispatchers there, you know, then there's some relief. Then that person can walk away from the desk for 15 or 20 minutes and take a break and go eat a sandwich in the back.
I want to stay with what you're saying. I was just, I was just hoping that the 24 hours of overtime on these other three would reasonably go down somewhat. Because that...
See, I, I don't think that I can give you that assurance.
Mary?
I'm not saying an assurance.
Just a quick question for Chief. Is that probably because you, you mentioned you had a, you have a sick dispatcher?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's because of our current shortages and we don't have people to, to take up the slack.
You can't fill, fill in the shifts.
I'm certainly going to try to increase our part-time dispatchers. But then again, too, I mean, there's some cost, there's a lot of cost with that. Because if you're only getting, if you, you know, you're expending 20 hours of training on these people at a certain cost, but you're only getting eight hours of service out of them a, a month. And, you know, the, the cost of keeping them on the rosters ends up being more expensive over the year than to not have any at all. And it's hard because it's one of those, one of those positions. And I plead, and please, I ask that you go home and, and just Google short dispatcher shortage or 911 public safety telecommunicator shortages. It's not just Sturbridge. It's everywhere. It's everywhere because it, it's an underappreciated, it's an underpaid, and it's a, it's a high burnout position. And, and people are, the people either are getting into it for short-term or they're not even going near it for, for, for jobs and for professions. And, and nobody has any good answers for it. However, I know that we need two dispatchers on the desk all the time. And at least during the busiest times, which are the day and evening shifts. And that's what I'm trying to fill.
Yeah. So, when you submit the warrant article, I'm just saying, if you had some of this, some of the facts lined up as to why there's more calls and all this, it might increase the chances of it getting accepted at the special town meeting. That's just my take.
But I just, I am, I'm gonna, I just believe that numbers...
Because it's just...
But you know the FinCom is going to delve into it. You want to see it too?
And I know how the numbers work, too. They just, you know, sometimes it may, it may, but this is not a new issue.
No, I understand. I know that. I've sat here...
I, I've talked about burnout seven, eight years ago. At, at FinCom meetings and at Selectmen's meetings.
I totally understand, and I've heard you many times request this when we have the joint meeting in March with the FinCom.
But I've never, I've been the police chief here for 12 years.
Right.
I've been, I've been a police officer for 33 years and I've never been scared before. And I'm scared right now.
All I'm...
And I, and I, and I'm, I have, that's why I have to act. I would never have come before you for this, otherwise.
I'm, I'm not resisting it in any way. Don't want you to read it that way, no.
Oh, no, I'm not. I'm just, but I'm trying to express how passionate I am about this.
You feel very strongly about it and from a safety point. I get it. But if you had some of the reasons why you're coming to special town meeting with the request, because typically it's in the budget for the next fiscal year, I just want to see, you know, because it's going to be up to the townspeople.
It is, yes.
So, if you have some of the facts, like I was, you know, taking notes.
And I will, and I...
It surprised me when I saw 24 hours a week overtime.
And I will, and, and I don't know...
Just from their own burnout, is what I'm saying. And you said the number of calls, and we've doubled our firefighters, and those calls go somewhere. If you just lay that out in a memo, I think it would be useful.
Okay. I will do that. No, that's great advice, and I will do that.
I have a question. The calls for service, are those mostly 911 calls?
No. A call for services is, is defined as any, any call that comes into our department, meaning the public safety community requires a response from somebody. Whether it's a, a fire department response, a smoke alarm, a, a general question that requires log notation. If a person walks in and wants to report a speeding car, any, any type of, any type of call that comes into the station, whether it's a walk-in or a telephone call, that requires some action by a police officer, a firefighter, or a paramedic.
I note that there's been a 20% increase in calls for service from, or year-to-date, from 2017 to 2018. Is there any difference in the way that these calls are logged in, or is it just...
No, our call, we, we've, we've captured the calls the same way as long as I, I can remember.
I mean, that's a rather significant increase in calls for service, 20%.
And I want you to know that in those calls for service, motor vehicle stops are in those calls for service, arrests are in those calls for service. Reporting of a, of a crash, automobile crash, are in those calls for service. Again, false alarms, house checks, building checks, those are all service, those are all calls for service.
But all, most all of these calls go through a dispatcher.
Yes.
One time or another.
Whether it's a dispatcher answering the radio, whether it's a dispatcher answering the telephone, whether it's a dispatcher answering 911. Those, those are all calls for, those are all the ways calls for services are commu, or walk-ins are all calls for service, the way they're communicated. Those four ways currently.
Listen, that doesn't count all the silly calls you get. Like, "What's the weather in Sturbridge today?"
A lot of those aren't categorized as calls for service unless there's a response needed by a police officer, or dispatcher, or firefighter, or paramedic. A general, "I'm calling for directions. How do I get to Hamilton Road Gun Club or Sturbridge Village?" Those aren't, those are not, even though there's an actions being taken, those are generally not captured.
No, but I mean, they still have to be answered.
Yes, yes. And, and for every crash, there's a dozen 911 calls that come in. From cellphone calls to household calls, to business calls, whoever is seeing it, they're dialing 911.
I don't have any problem seeing the increase because if you look at just the elder, the senior population has increased immensely in the last 10 years. And if you just look at the retirement park that was there, it had initially 75 homes and it went to 100. Now, it's over 200. And most of those have a minimum of one person, but sometimes two. So, if you add all the growth that way, I mean, we've had, we have many seniors. And you see the growth in the senior center, you see more people using it. So, just that population alone has increased, let alone needs in, for your service in other areas too, let alone that. But I'm thinking, no, that's probably for medical many times versus anything else. But nonetheless, it's still coming through you.
Yes. And it, it does. And who's the first person that anybody sees? It's the, it's the face of our public safety departments. The first person they talk to, the first person they, they come in contact with, the first person that the bit of information comes from. And, you know, unfortunately, they're often the last ones recognized for their services. And, you know, and this, but this issue here that we, that, you know, that we brought up, I, I really think that we're at a point where it needs to be addressed.
Okay. Sure, we will take it under consideration.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna give us a memo, but I'm...
I'm sorry.
We're supposed, what state agency, who mandates or strongly advises two dispatchers? I missed, and we don't have it.
It's the National Fire... The NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association or Administration.
NFPA.
National Fire Protection Association. There's a standard I, I want to think, I want to think it's 1221 that requires that any departments that are providing emergency medical dispatch, which is mandated by state law, that if we have a PSAP, which is the 911 answering point, the pub, PSAP is a public safety answering point. If we have one of those, which we do, we're required to make sure that all the dispatchers that are answering that are EMD certified, emergency medical dispatch certified. Then you have the NFPA over here that, for the medical standards, that are saying that if you're providing the EMD services, you have to have two full-time dispatchers at all times on the desk.
Okay. I missed the, the NFPA. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Okay. Next, we have our building inspector, Nelson Burlingame. Good evening, Nelson.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
I sent out the monthly report to you people. And basically, I'll do as I always did. I'll hit the highlights of the report. If you have it in front of you. As far as the daily operations, I think the two things I want to point out most is we've issued 501 permits to date. The other thing is I've, we, as a group, have started a 110 periodic safety inspections for the year. The schools have had some violations, but we're working with them to correct them. And obviously, you know, the schools have opened and everything. And, you know, we're giving them some time to make the corrections. And then I went to number two, specific commercial projects. One of them was Edwards Gas. And Mary Darling, last time I was in, or maybe the time before the monthly report, she asked me about the buildings that are in back of Edwards Gas. So, I stopped by for Mary and I talked to the owner. And I explained to him, you know, because those buildings in the back, they are kind of still ugly, the ones way in the back. And I was trying to get him thinking about possibly taking them down. And I think we come to the conclusion that the one to the left is the worst, the one to the right is in pretty good shape still. So, he said to me, he is seriously considering taking that one down and, and like either siding or whatever the other building and making it look good. Because he is going to do a bunch of work in the front.
Excellent.
And that was a good point that you made, Mary. So, like I said, I did stop and I did talk to him and I, I put the idea in, in his head. He, Edwards himself, he's a pretty nice guy, so, you know, hopefully something comes out of it. What I wanted to say about the 40B project is, it's kind of like on hold. Andre Saint Laurent, the owner of the building, said that he probably wouldn't do anything for a year. And I guess the issue there is he didn't realize his tie-ins are suing water. It's, it's like $800,000, I think. And I don't think they actually budgeted for that.
$800,000?
Yeah. So, so he's, he's, he's not quite sure what he's going to do on it. I mean, I think they're still going to do the project, but it is kind of like on hold. He doesn't plan on doing anything, at least for a year, he told me, maybe a couple of weeks ago. Doggy daycare, I stopped in there the other day. At the moment, there's plumbers, electricians, everything in there. They're not, they're doing renovations, but they're not ripping a whole building apart, but some of it. But, but they did do the asbestos abatement. It was mostly like in the ceilings and stuff, and there was some in pipes and stairs. So, they did the abatement. And again, the plumber, electrician, and drilling holes and stuff and setting up. But they haven't did any real, like petitions or anything for the dogs, but, but they're, they're going to start soon. Petrogas, Roy Rogers, I mean, they're actually excited about getting it started. The people that, that own the company. The, the problem at the moment on that, the reason they haven't gone along as much as they can is it's a public water supplier. When a building's like that and it's over 25 people, they have to go through the DEP. And when they went through the DEP, they, they put deficient information. And the reason being is because they need a resource area around that whole area. And they don't actually own enough land. So, they have to take and get some permissions from either the owners or buy some property or whatever. I, I have got calls into the DEP because they're suggesting for me not to issue a building permit. And I'm going to talk to them again even tomorrow because I'm going to, I'm going to ask them, because I really want to give them a permit, at least for the demo and stuff, so they can get started. And they'll be doing it at the owner's risk. My building code says right in the first chapter that I can list, I can issue a permit that's called a phase permit, with the owner realizing he's taking it at his own risk that, you know, if they don't get water, you know, they got to do something about it. So, well, I'm working on that. Center of Hope, if you go by the old garage, you see where they've put paper on the walls, they've changed the windows and stuff. I mean, they're working on it. Marijuana facilities, they're starting to pour the foundations. I've been up there a couple of times. The dirt's real solid. They've did compaction tests, everything like that. Panera Bread, as everybody can see, they're starting to frame the exterior walls. They're going along really well now. There was a short time where there was a, a little downtime. What happened is they were trying to get the framers in there because every, everybody's busy right now. You, you just can't get people and, 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 you know, getting people and quality people. But now they're, they're moving right along. And I know Jay Patel was looking to design review for, for the material. Because I think what happened is it's actually going quicker than he thought. Now, with the framers and, and he wants to get the material okayed by design review so they can actually start siding the building and everything. McDonald's, their renovation is in the final phase. They're, they're reconfiguring the inside bathrooms. They're making them AAB compliant, 521 CMR. And, and, and they're reconfiguring a little bit in the eating area. And they're doing some painting and paper. And they're kind of like updating a building. It's like 35 years old, I think the guy told me. And then that 198, that new building across from, the tow company now, the new tow company, Harrington Medical Office, they, they're doing fit-up in there now. They've, they've rented like about 1,700 square feet in the building. They're actually the only tenants.
It's a beautiful building.
Yes. They're the only tenants in the building, so I'm pretty excited about that for, for everybody, you know, because it's, it's a good thing. And then the public house is coming along really well. They're doing a lot of finished work. The stairs are like maybe three-quarters done. It's beautiful, beautiful building. And then Jelly...
Nelson on that. I noticed your report must be spell check. Always spells public that way.
Okay.
Without the K.
Okay. Okay. I'll re...
Well, that happens, happens all of...
Yeah, it's pub, I do use spell check, but it doesn't pick it up because, yeah, yeah.
Well, no, it spells it, you could type in correctly, but it switches it to that because that's...
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, that happens. It's something I don't look and I'm like, "How did that get in there?" It's like totally opposite from what I was even thinking. Jellystone Park, or what's the name of it now?
Pine Lake.
Pine Lake. They're doing their sites right now. They're setting their electrical in there. They, they did pull a permit for the garage. They've cut some trees. They're doing some site work and stuff. You know, they're moving along pretty well. They're in the office. They're always communicating. It's a, it's a really good company. Okay. And then I'm going to my three, the training. That month of August, I went to an energy code issue training. It was actually put on, but the state was pretty good. It was at 50 Maple Street, the building down in Milford. And then, of course, we had the Alice training. Capital budgets, they have nothing personal issues. It's nothing new. And then the town administrator's involvement. I, I haven't had a real long time chance to talk to him, of course, he just started. I do plan to talk to him about Seven Main Street. I can, I can tell you this as far as where on Seven Main, because you had asked about that last time, too. And, and I think the highway, because they helped me, you know, did trucks and ladders and stuff. And A1 Spectrum went down and they did their asbestos survey. And we all knew it anyways, kind of on the outside. It's asbestos siding, which we realized. But my goal is, is when, if, if we get to the point that we take it down, is we take the siding off and the rest of the stuff can go to a regular dump. There was a question. They thought there might be vermiculite upstairs in the attic. And that's why the highway helped me with the ladder. And we punched a hole through one of the vents and we checked, but there's, there's no vermiculite even in there. It's all fiberglass. So, that was off the table. So, now what I'm going to do is I've got, I believe, there's some companies, there's like three of them. I'll list the companies that I'm going to take and I believe I'm going to reach out to. Western Mass Demolition Corporation, JR, I think it's pronounced Vinagro. Then there's Burgess Wrecking and Escavation and F&amp;D Trucking. And anybody else that, that wants to, but I think we're going to put something out for, for a quote as far as ripping the building down. And I think what we're going to do is I'm going to give them the asbestos survey and tell them that they can hire the abatement company because I think it'd be easier and then we ain't working with a bunch of things and just get the total price for it. And, and meanwhile, I'm going to, I'm going to do a certified, another certified letter to the, to the bank, to the owners. So, they understand. Maybe if we're lucky, they'll rip it down, you know, at that point, who knows? But it's getting close to the point that the town's going to, you know, more than likely pull the trigger. We did a preliminary site visit with, with the fire chief, the highway and us, disinterested citizen. And we haven't made anything official yet, but it, it, it looks like it's going to be declared as, you know, unsafe building and it needs to come down. And then, okay, Eight Brook Field Road, that's all set. The insurance company is, is happy with it. It's all painted, all that. Looks pretty good. It was a small price. And then the other thing that I'm going to talk to the town administrator about is locks. A few of them at the car building, the town building, also there's some, there's some, but those are getting corrected. At the, one was at the high school, one was at the junior high. And I, I do plan to discuss it with him and actually give him my opinion and then, you know, see what he says and what we decide. and then, you know, see what he says and what we decide. Basically, that's my report.
Priscilla?
I have a question on the locks. What is your opinion, since you...
Wait a minute. If we're going to talk about security, that's all executive session.
I don't think it is security, is it?
Locks, yes. How locks works and what doesn't work, that's all under security devices, as a matter of fact. So that's executive session material.
Well, can we have him come and explain it to us?
Yeah, sure, and he can talk to Mr. Kozak first.
I would, I, you know...
Yeah, we can go into executive session. And if we wanna hear what he says, he'd have to be there.
I do wanna hear, I'd like to know what the building commissioner thinks on this.
Well, building inspector, he'd have to be there.
Yeah, so, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think I could shed some light on the subject. I think any subject, if, if you get different people's ideas, you know, I, I think that's how you come up with the best solution, because we've been involved in it. Matter of fact, like two weeks ago, we went to Springfield, to the Western Mass Builders Association on, is it Cadwell, Coldwell Street? And the BBRS, every, every month they have their meetings, they have it in a certain place. So myself, the facilities coordinator, and somebody that represented the fire department, we went there, 'cause we, 'cause we wanted to get a feeling of, of, of what they thought. 'Cause this is a big subject, this isn't just garbage, these locks. I mean, it's, it's schools, some are floor locks, some are door locks, some are barrel bolts, some are door closers, I mean, there's, there's a bunch of stuff going on. And it's a very heated topic. And I think there's two different sides, and who's right and who's wrong, I don't think anybody really knows. But it, it, it's gotta get resolved, you know?
Oh yeah, no doubt about it.
Yeah, and, and we're working on it. And, and the thing with me is the building code says certain things, and I'm supposed to follow the building code, whether I agree, disagree, or whatever. I still have to follow unless, you know, you go and you, you get in a variance or an exception or whatever. And in this case, we gotta get a couple. One, one would be there, and the other one would be with 521 AAB Architectural Access Board, because from what I'm hearing, they're gonna get involved too, because of the graspability of the locks and getting in.
Yeah, we went to it, yeah, we're getting into too much detail right now.
All right, all right, all right, all right, sorry.
No, that's okay.
No problem.
It's okay.
Anything else for Nelson?
On a lighter note, I just, 'cause I don't know a lot about building. On the framing exterior walls on Panera, I just have a lot of people asking me when the Panera's gonna be there. And I, like, I, you know, I don't know, but I can see that.
Yeah, end of November, early December.
Is that the plan?
Mm-hmm, that's what they're hoping.
Yeah, that's what the hope is.
And there's room for another restaurant there as well, to sit down.
Yes, one, one is fit out for them and the other one is empty, yes.
Okay, and we don't...
They don't know yet themselves. Yeah.
These are the questions about town.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of interest in that building.
Yeah, everybody wants to see it open, I think they're ready to try it out.
The latest one too is the old fire station. What's the town gonna do with that? Somebody wants an olive garden there, somebody, I mean, everyone's got their own opinion. Okay.
Yeah, I just had, had, wanted to bring up Petrogas and availability of a community water supply there. Until DEP approves the community water supply, you as building inspector can't issue a building permit.
They're strongly suggesting that I don't. I don't know if I really can, and I'm kinda checking on it now.
Yeah, I, I think one of the criteria for issuance of a building permit is...
It is water. But then again, it also says I can issue a phase permit with exceptions if you take responsibility, so. The other thing too is, is, is it's a revolving, you made me think of it, 'cause I talked to the, to the clerk who works there today. And he said that originally, they weren't gonna rip the old building down. Now they're saying they might wanna rip the old building down, 'cause they're getting prices back like for the steel and stuff. And, and they think now it might be cheaper to do the whole building than to try to revamp that one, because it's pretty strange the way it was built, you know? So we don't know what's gonna happen there either.
Well, that'd kick in a whole new process with...
Yeah, I, I talked to Jean, and I, and Jean said she wants him to talk to her. Right, I, yeah, yeah, I ain't sure.
Nothing's easy.
Nothing's easy.
Yeah, I, I don't know, if they, if they can't get a community water supply there, is it... I mean, at some point, we're gonna have to run town water out to that, that area.
Yeah, if we want to see it.
If we want all the rate pays to pay through the nose?
Well...
That's a discussion for another day.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
Everybody wants free water down there.
Everywhere.
They would also like free sewer.
Everywhere.
They feel pretty confident that they're gonna get an agreement with the butters. But you know, some of them are butters, I think they all kinda like, they're separate owners, but they're not really separate owners, like, you know what I mean? They name they're separate owners, but they're a group that's really together. That's the feeling I'm getting, so I think they're not gonna have a problem.
We just, you know, we just had, you know, a study of the Route 15 corridor. Slackman went to the, to the meetings and stuff. And one of the, one of the issues on development of that area is the availability of town water and sewer.
It's been like that for what, 20 years? At least that, it's the same problem, it's the same problem, different year.
The original zoning they put down, it is. But that's, we're gonna have a meeting with the planning board to discuss that study in the near future, maybe after Christmas. Okay, Nelson, the other report that we usually get, you know, broken out, we didn't get it?
I tell you what, 'cause I asked Andy about that, and I don't think I got an answer, and then I forgot to ask again. Yes, I'll tell you what, I got a couple of them, they give me coffees, and I apologize.
Well, no, you can just leave them here and, you know...
I'll give them to...
Yeah, because like even when we read 501 permits, it sounds outlandish, but, you know...
For the year to date?
Yeah, yeah, you know, but some of those are more important than others, than a signed permit, say, an inspection permit or something.
And it's a solid, I'm only 'cause I look at GLTMS and I just look at the last one.
Yeah, but it's always, you know, like we get the detail for the police and fire too, so it's always nice to see where these things are.
No problem, I, I will remember that too, Mary.
Can I just ask you one question?
Sure.
This, I know you said the schools have violations that they are working on correcting. They're not safety related, are they, or...
Anything that needed immediately done, they did. And history repeats, you know, like some of it, people, you were in school, deadbolt, stuff like that. We see quite a few, but they took them off immediately, you know what I'm saying? So it's, you know...
So the things they needed to address right away, they did?
They did, yes, yes.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Nelson, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a resignation from Frank McNeil. He's resigning from the Personnel Committee, the Planning Board, and the Safety Committee. Is, was that a sneeze?
No, cough.
Well then, not God bless. Okay, is there a motion then to accept the resignation of Frank McNeil?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, we also have a resignation from the partnership from Susan Grandone. Is there a motion to accept? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, next, town administrator's update.
It looks a little light there, but I just, just real quick, I had just a few, few points. I just wanna thank you all for choosing me to work here for the next few months. And I'm looking forward to it. So far, I've really, I've enjoyed meeting various people here, all, all of you. And I'm sure three or four months, I'll be here, go by very quick. And I do, I do hope I can keep everything going as smooth as possible. I just also wanted to point out that I did have a chance on Thursday to sit down with Leon. And he had a nice list of various projects that are ongoing, I believe you all have a copy of it. So he wants to make sure I'm not gonna be bored at all while I'm here, so I'll be definitely digging into those, I already started looking at it.
Eleven pages of...
Several, yes, I know how he had time to put it all together. And also, he was kind enough to have a meeting in the afternoon with department heads. So I had to have an opportunity to meet all the departments, or most of the department heads here. And actually, I did also get to meet some more department head and some board people at his going-away party, which was also nice. My, my major goal at this point is, for the next few weeks, is to get the town meeting packaged together for you, making sure that we have all the articles for warrant posting done properly and have it basically prepared for you. So I think our, your meeting, our next meeting on the first will be reviewing, you'll be voting the articles. That's important at this time of the year. The only other area that I just started talking to was the public safety, is having an emergency management meeting. I do, I'm always afraid this time of the year, when we have different storms coming up the coast, we might need to do something, and since I am green, I like to know a little more about what, what they have. I'm sure there's a good plan in place, but I try to get used to it. And I hope to have an opportunity to start visiting different departments. And I'm starting to meet people more in a town hall here, I think that's important. I'm, I keep on working that direction. Basically, and I guess one other point that I'll be working with the office is to have the, set up the new town administrator's search committee meeting, which I hope they get that rolling as soon as possible. And I was talking to the chairman today about our office doing that, trying to set something up for next week or so. I think that's, at that point, this is pretty much what I'm trying to do and looking forward to continue working with you. Please feel free to always contact me. If I'm not in the office, I'll have information in my house, you can always give me a call or send me a text. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have old business. Priscilla?
None.
Chase?
No.
Mike?
Nope.
Mary?
No.
And I have none. New business, Priscilla?
No.
Chase?
No.
Mike?
No.
Mary?
No.
And I have none. Correspondence?
Got it. Correspondence dated August 23, Sovereign Consulting, Inc., notification of post-temporary solution status report for pilot travel. Pilot travel centers at 40 Haynes Street. August 31, charter communications, upcoming changes to the channel lineup. September 4, reappointment of William McDonnell as deputy moderator at the annual town meeting as of June 7. September 7, charter communications, annual Form 500 complaint slash outage report. September 7, a notice of mortgage foreclosure. Notice from Harmon Law Offices regarding the sale of real estate in Sturbridge. September 10, Sturbridge Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles Approval. Approval letter from Maura Healy, Attorney General, regarding warrant articles 31 and 32 from the June 4 annual town meeting.
Okay, does anyone else have any other correspondence? Okay, Board of Selectmen Meetings, we have November 7, 2016. Okay, there was just...
I guess that's just you and I, I...
Mike and I.
Yeah, by necessity, we'll, we'll either have to agree or... I, I read through it, and it's, it reflects my recollection as it is of the, that meeting.
I just had one correction.
Yeah, that Mike Haggerty, yeah, yeah.
On page one.
Yeah, Haggerty.
Charter Review Committee heading. It's Bill Haggerty, not Mike Haggerty.
Yeah.
Okay, other than that...
She didn't prepare them that...
No, I know.
Yeah.
Is there a motion, Mike?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of November 7, 2016.
As amended?
As amended.
I'll second it, any discussion, Mike?
No.
All in favor? Okay, that's it, and three abstentions. Okay, then we have September 5, 2018.
I have...
Mike?
Something on, my motion on, or actually, the, the second motion after closing the public hearing, I think it should read to adopt, and scratch the, the words CPI factor, single tax rate of, and scratch the words of 1915, with a split tax rate of 105. I think the motion was to adopt a single tax rate, period.
Yes, and delete the rest of the sentence.
And otherwise, we've got a split tax rate. And everybody's gonna freak out, so it's, let's just delete that.
I know, I read through and I hadn't seen that. Oh, also on page seven. Boy, that's not a very healthy end of the board.
Oh, it's allergy, allergy season is just bad.
Okay. Under the last motion to appoint Mike Suppan, that first paragraph, El Goman presented a request from Nelson Burlingame, the building commissioner. He's actually the building inspector. He is a licensed commissioner from the state, but the job here in Sturbridge is building inspector. And he's referred to earlier as that. And that's what the charter says, so that's what it is. Anyone else have anything? Is there a motion then to approve as amended?
I'll make...
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, then we have September 10, 2018. Any corrections?
If nobody else has corrections, I'll make to, make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discuss, discussion, all in favor? Citizens Forum, still not rushing forward, so, Priscilla?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion?
We got it.
All in favor? Okay. So you were right, Priscilla.
Yeah, I was right all my time.
Eight o'clock.